Okay, we all set? Okay, welcome everyone to our last committee, the whole meeting of 2024. And it's been, it's been a ride. So looking forward to putting some of this, some of this year behind us. But we will talk about that in a while. So it is moved by Counselor Cairns and seconded by Counselor Hunter. Be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole Agenda of December 17, 2024 be approved as amended. We are removing the license of occupation deputation. So please vote on that. Okay, that carries, thank you. Counselor, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Varney, I'll go to you for land acknowledgement statement, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lorenz. We would like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the First Peoples, who for thousands of years before us were and are still the keepers and caretakers of this land, where we now live and work, and in particular, the Chipewas of Rama, Wata Mohawk First Nations, and the Moon River Métis. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Inuit people. We recognize all the generations of Indigenous people and their historic connection to this place, and we are grateful for the opportunity to gather here at this time.
Thank you. So we'll go on to the consent agenda. It's moved by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Jorgensen. Be it resolved that the following consent agenda items be approved. Minutes, Gravenhurst Public Library Board, October 10, 2024. Minutes, Accessibility Advisory Committee, October 17, 2024. Report, 2025 interim levy and temporary borrowing bylaws. Report, Shore Road Closure 082024 for Lee Chen, Sunny Lake. Report, new ward boundary bylaw. Report, bylaw to appoint members of the Committee of Adjustment. Counsel? Counselor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we pull number five, new ward boundary bylaw? Please.
Okay. Do we need a second or for that? Okay, so, okay, so, thank you. We'll move that to new business. Oh, and I should mention that I have our deputy clerk helping me out today, so thanks, thanks for that, yeah. Just so, just so people don't think Kayla's morphed into a new being. So thank you for joining us today, Mr. Gilson. Okay, so with that, I'll ask you to vote on the remaining items. That carries, thank you. Okay, so, moving right along to bylaw to appoint a treasurer, report number ADM 202405. It is moved by Counselor Morphy, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Be it resolved that report number ADM 202405 RE bylaw to appoint a treasurer be received for information, and that council approve the bylaw to appoint a treasurer. So, it's Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There, there's a handful of positions under the municipal act that require a formal appointment bylaw, and that the treasurer is one of them. As council is aware, earlier this year, we announced the upcoming retirement of Mr. Ross Jeffrey as Director of Finance and Treasurer. These are certainly some, some big shoes to fill. And after a thorough recruitment process, we selected a new Director of Finance/Treasurer, that being Wayne Campbell. Wayne joined the Town of Gravenhurst in November of 2024 and has been transitioning into the role and learning lots from Mr. Jeffrey over the last, the last month or so. With over 15 years of progressive leadership experience in finance and a CPA under his belt, Wayne has successfully navigated various financial scenarios and drove strategic growth in previous roles with Northern College and Campbellton Regional Community, where he served as Director of Finance and Treasurer for several years. In his previous roles, Wayne built efficient teams, implemented robust financial processes, and helped steer his teams towards their financial goals. Again, this, this administrative report is necessarily to formally appoint Mr. Campbell as the treasurer for the municipality. I trust that everything is in order in the report and look forward to us all welcoming Wayne here as the next treasurer for the Town of Gravenhurst. So, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll leave it there and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Counselor, are there any questions? Obviously, bittersweet. It's a bittersweet moment for us. We're, we're obviously, you know, it's sad to see Mr. Jeffrey leave, but I think he's got some pretty exciting plans ahead and, I mean, he chose to leave. We didn't kick him out, so, just so everybody knows. It's, this is his decision, but we're looking forward to Wayne, Wayne joining the team, so Mr. Campbell joining the team, so we look forward to working with you. And on behalf of council, welcome. No, we're trying to recruit him for curling. Okay, great. So with that, if there's not any questions or formalities are before us, so please vote. And that carries, congratulations. Moving right along. Accessible features for public signage and plaques, report number LEG 202421. It's moved by Counselor Varney, seconded by Counselor Strength. Be it resolved that report number LEG 202421 RE accessible features for public signage and plaques be received for information, and that the Accessibility Advisory Committee be directed to review the town's multi-year accessibility plan, accessible customer service policies, and integrated accessibility standards policy as part of its 2025 work plan, and, and consider the inclusion of additional accessible features in these documents, especially QR codes, tactical mapping with Braille, and the utilization of specialized smartphone applications. Counselor Varney?
Add anything more to that? I think it's self-explanatory, and I know the, the committee will probably be working towards this in the new year.
Oh, okay. Our deputy clerk has a presentation, so we'll go to that, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to council, this report is in response to a motion from council earlier this April requesting staff review the visibility of accessibility features like Braille on its public signage and plaques. Based on the research conducted, three accessible features were reviewed. Braille being included in the resolution. QR codes and tactile mapping. With the force reflecting on the current smart technologies and software the town could potentially embrace. Beginning with Braille, it is considered the traditional and historical means of relaying non-verbal information to the blind community. However, in the last decade, with the advancement of technology and AI, Braille usage has generally been in general decline. On top of this, the logistics and costs associated with Braille on historical and interpretive plaques would be significant. A strong material will be needed in order to accommodate for wear and tear and, and general wear and tear, and we're staying in the elements. And also staffing to preserve the plaques would be required. That being said, its use on internal signage could be considered along with other accessible features in the municipal facilities, namely tactile maps. With respect to QR codes, I'm pretty sure everyone's familiar with those. The two-dimensional squares with arrangements of the white and black squares that once scanned will be relay the user to a website. QR codes will be useful for interior signage as well as exterior plaques, as it could direct individuals to a website that contains audio files of the sign and plaque information. It'd also be more feasible and require less resources compared to Braille to relay information on the signage. And because of how small QR codes can be, it would not only be possible to incorporate them on new signage, but also existing signage and plaques. Moving on to tactile maps, so when I say tactile maps, I mean three-dimensional representations of an area that provides spatial understanding for blind individuals who touch the map. These maps could be used, could be created and used at the entrances of publicly accessible municipal facilities, such as Town Hall, and they can even be created for municipal events or the farmers market as well. Moving on to the final aspect, and staff would be remiss without including this, because it includes the advancements in technology and AI to support the blind community. There's a whole sleuth of smartphone and gadgets to have drastically improve the livelihood and experiences of blind individuals. And the report provides a handful of examples that are really interesting. One smartphone application in particular uses scans of a building, LiDAR scans and GPS technology to help navigate a blind individual via the audio cues and haptic feedback through the actual building. So in conjunction with tactile mapping, these could be valuable resources that help eliminate barriers for individuals navigating our facilities and even events. Further research would be required should the town consider incorporating this, which leads me to the concluding factor of the report. For future considerations, following the research and the noted feasibilities of each accessible feature, the next step of the process, should council be amenable to the recommendation, would be to involve the AAC to determine which of these features could be and should be incorporated within the town. In conjunction to this, the AAC will be tasked with reviewing the town's multi-year accessibility plan and its two policies to reflect the features that the town incorporates with respect to accessibility. And the expectation is that the project will be included in the AAC's 2025 work plan, and staff would work with them to produce a report with recommendations to council by the end of the year. And with that, your worship, I'll leave it there, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So Counselor, are there any questions? Counselor Morphy?
Thank you, through your worship. I need to understand the QR process a little bit better. I'm trying to get my head around it. When I do a QR code right now of a menu, it takes me to more written words. Does this QR code take you to an audio service, or is it? And how do they know that the QR code's even there? Okay, thanks, I'll take you.
Mr. Gilson?
Through your worship to Counselor Morphy. The QR codes naturally will relay the user once scanned to a website, and whatever's on the website or the URL is given to the individual. That said, for blind individuals who would not, of course, be able to see the QR codes, as noted in the report, there actually are applications that essentially become their eyes. And if providing information ahead of time for an individual, like a resident or a visitor coming to the town, they would just hover their smartphone in front of them, and the smart application would actually detect the QR code, alert the individual, and should the person wish to access the website on the QR code, it would open up for the individual and provide the audio.
Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship, through you. You know, obviously, in order to use Braille on a sign, the sign has to be physically accessible as well. So are we going to be putting in guidelines for that? I'm thinking, you know, of the, for example, Heritage Committee. We have a lot of informational signs that go up through that committee, and there's, there's probably locations that are difficult for someone, you know, outside of a visual impairment, you know, someone to get to. So are we going to be looking at anything other than just the visual aspect of it? As well, looking at perhaps guidelines for physical accessibility to some of these, informational signs, things like that, historic signs that we put up?
Mr. Gilson?
Through you, Counselor, sorry, through you, Mayor Lorenz, to Counselor Jorgensen. The recommendation is, or at least your staff's research, is that Braille is not used on exterior signage for, per that reason. Physicality and location of those plaques would have to be on level for all individuals of various physical abilities, whether it be in assisted devices like wheelchairs or for individuals who are of physical limitations. That being said, though, in terms of its expansion to interior signage, there would be necessity to review proper locations for those signs. It includes Braille and tactile mapping, which is part of the recommendation, that if we were to incorporate Braille, the tactile mapping would also be included. And also how widespread its use in the interior locations would also have to be reviewed as well.
Anybody else? I have a concern, not really a question. So we, we've all heard lately that there's QR scamming going on, right? Stickers are going over legitimate, legitimate QR codes and they're, so, I guess my concern would be, do you think that this is something that should be more of a, something that you can access through the website, you know, and then find what you need through the website, our website, rather than, you know, out, being out in the space, but, but the, you know that you're accessing safe information, I guess is what I'm getting at. So how do you, how do you combat that? Because the scammers keep on scamming. I mean, every single way they figure it out. So, especially to somebody vulnerable who's using, you know, they can't, they're visually impaired. So I think that's a bit worrisome, the use of QR codes.
To the mayor, didn't actually consider that in terms of the scam or any sort of scandalous behavior with respect to QR codes. But that being said, that information and potential will be relayed to the Accessibility Advisor Committee for them to consider, at least in terms of either to prevent providing information on the whereabouts of those QR codes, or maybe even just not use them entirely.
Some people, some people in this world. Okay. So if there's no other questions, I will, I will, actually, before I go any, any further, I do have a question. So you, you sort of in your report say that, that Braille is maybe not that efficient. Do we still think that they should, they should investigate tactile mapping with Braille? Or do you think that that's not necessary because of the Braille is on the way out?
I wouldn't necessarily, sorry, through you, I wouldn't necessarily say that Braille's on the way out, just in terms of education of the use of Braille and Peoples or the blind individuals' reliability on Braille, as in to understand their surroundings and relay information. That being said, when I researched, or when staff researched for this report, we were heavily in communication with the CNAB, which relayed information that Braille is still used, and it will be in conjunction with other accessible features. So if, say, for example, the AAC were to consider the incorporation of tactile maps for municipal facilities, chances are the tactile map will also include Braille, because it will provide information to the individual.
Okay, thank you. So, counsel, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, your worship. Just on that point, deputy, did you, your team look into, for example, there's technology available through AI now on your smartphone, where you, you point your smartphone at anything, and it's, one of the programs called Lens, and it will tell you verbally what it is you're looking at. And that's, so obviously you have to have a smartphone, but many do, and it's very simple to use and wouldn't require any expenditure on our part, not that I'm wanting to minimize that, but it's just another tool that's available and very easy to use. Thank you.
Okay. So seeing no other questions, I will ask you to vote. That carries, thank you. Okay, so, we have some new business here from the consent agenda. It's moved by Counselor Strength, and I need a second or to table that? Okay, Counselor Robinson? Be resolved that report number LEG 202420 RE new ward boundary bylaw be received for information, and that council endorse the new ward boundary bylaw. Counselor Strength?
Through you. I don't support the new ward boundary bylaw. During the discussion in last month's meeting, the experts told us to pick a different option. I agreed with the other option. Geographically made sense to me. This doesn't make sense to me, so I don't support it. Short and sweet.
Okay, anybody else? Did you want to speak to it? You did support it, so you don't have to speak to it as a second or. I don't want to force your hand. I think Counselor Morphy sort of said Michelle, so Counselor Robinson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to say, I do support it, but I just wanted to put it on the table and talk about it, so, that's all I had to say.
Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship. You know, at this point, I, I, I look at my own ward, for example, and I know, you know, probably all do concentrate on our own wards more than the big picture, but, you know, in particular, there's, there's a whole section at the south that would be going over to where, where Counselor Robinson represents, and they have nothing in common. You know, and that's a concern of mine in particular. But at the same time, for us to do nothing would, would leave the status quo, which I don't. I, I do think we need to, to change from the status quo for better representation by population, but, I mean, like others, I, I supported the recommended option, and mostly because I felt it better divided on, you know, areas of interest, if you will, that we talked about as one of the criteria. So I still preferred the option three myself as well.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, your worship, through you. I, I should say that I, I looked at the options very closely, and I, I saw the merits in the recommended option, but there are other issues that I indicated at the meeting that persuaded me to go with the, the option that was adopted by council. And having said that, I also think it should be reiterated that we have a review process involved in this, so that, I, I agree with, once again, I agree with Counselor Jorgensen. It's just getting to be a habit. That, you know, we can't, we can't do nothing. And so I, I, I thought what we did adopt was a compromise, and let's see how things go, because I've, I've mentioned at the, at the council meeting, and I mentioned, I've mentioned many times at district. I'm not, I'm not, I'm concerned about population projections and also circumstance projections for everything, including climate and, and housing needs and so on, because we're in a, we're in a world right now where things change tomorrow. Instead of five years from now, they change tomorrow. So the fact that there's a review process involved was, was enough for me to, to go with the option that we did adopt. Thank you.
Counselor Roni?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. I'm also agreeing with Counselor Johnston. I agree with what we decided on, and I didn't agree with what was put forward. And I did state my reasons that for Ward One Counselor, I know it was said that, you know, we should be able to answer all the questions from whether they're lakefront properties or town owners, townspeople. But I do believe that these are two completely different things. I think they're apples and oranges. I mean, Counselor Jorgensen says his ward is very different to Counselor Robinson's. Well, I do believe that lakefront properties, for example, Counselor Morphy, she's getting lots of different questions than what I get. And so I feel that for the poor Ward One Counselor, the next one to have to deal with both of these will be an extra amount of work and more than what I am putting up with actually for the town. So I am actually supporting the motion that we put forward at the council meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Jorgensen, background?
Thank you, worship. With respect to, I guess, looking to our deputy clerk here, with respect to review. I mean, the concern of mine is that, you know, does review mean going through this whole process again in, you know, a short, rather relatively short amount of time? Is, is there a mechanism where we can, where the town can use the same methodology to look at specifically the populations in the wards? Do we know enough about the methodology that was used that we wouldn't have to go back to the consultants and say, do it all over again?
Mr. Deputy?
Through the chair to Counselor Jorgensen, the short answer is no. We reached out to the consultants because of their expertise and knowledge of the process, as well as the abilities and tools to review the wards and come to a conclusion or at least a number of options to provide to council. That being said, when it comes to the actual approval, or when we were looking to depose of the, the bylaw, there's a number of options available to council. You could, of course, approve it. Let it stand as the option two, as the preferred ward boundary. You could refer it back to staff to do either an internal review of, you know, we can just do another, if there's special council meeting or another Committee of the Whole working session to further drum out discussions on the preferred alternative, one of the five at least. Or we could also do an external review with our consultants again, though we would need to reach out to them and whether that subsequent review would begin within the scope of the previous project. I don't think it is, and I believe there would probably be an additional cost. I don't think it is, and I believe there would probably be an additional cost to bring them in again to further the review.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just, I, I think there's another option, Deputy, and Counselor Jorgensen, and that is that the event that Counselor Varney is going to give an update on today that we had in Huntsville last month, we had a absolutely magnificent presentation by, by the GeoHub, by Graham, and they are able to, they are able to provide information at a level that I've never seen before. You know, they, he was showing us properties, and you can, you can, you can go on and pinpoint your own property, and it will tell you that if there's a flood, you know, here's where the water's going to go, and, and all kinds of data on population, how they're moving and so on. So I, I think that prior, if we were going to do a review, or needed to consider a review, looking at Counselor Jorgensen's concern, that would be an option, at least to talk to them and see if they could provide us with up-to-date information about, about movements in our population data, because they certainly have the technology to do that. Thank you.
Anybody else? I have a question for Deputy Clerk. I, I don't want to vote for this either. I know it's going to come to the bylaw stage, so what is the process? Do I have to, to tell you, like, when do I tell you that I want to vote on this separately, separately? At the bylaw stage? And I'll, so I'll say my piece now. I don't want to support this. I think that from the projections of the consultant, who are the experts at their job, they're, they're going to uneven out again. The growth is happening. A lot of the suggestion was based on projected growth, which we know is in the same area, so we think we're going to be in the same boat a couple of years down the line. I also was hoping, again, for a smaller council. I think, as I said before, that everyone here is, works really hard. However, across the, across the district, I think there's 64 counselors, which I think is an awful lot over-representation, so I thought we could be, you know, the first to, to recognize that, and, you know, representation by population is fair. And lastly is, I would have really liked to see district counselors be accountable to a specific area. I know that we, now, we run at large and, and everyone does their part again. However, we know that the ward counselors get the call, and I think you're doubling up on the representation for the, for the person. Somebody is, anyway, those are my views, and so I won't be supporting it, so I just wanted to share that as to why I'm not going to vote for this bylaw. So with that, I will have you vote on just receiving, receiving the information. I'll accept the information, I just won't vote for the bylaw. Okay, that carried, thank you. Okay. So I'm going to now go over to updates from counsel. Counselor Strength, you have an update for Business Improvement Area Dormancy, BIA?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it's been a long, difficult struggle to get to where we are today. In November, at the end of November, the last five remaining board members got together to vote to go into dormancy. It was tough to, to get to that point, but we made it, we did it, and we voted to go dormant. I think that the, from what, excuse me, from what I gather from the downtown business corps, that this is a good thing, as I think I've suggested in the past discussions. We need to take a breather, take a break. Everybody that is on the board currently is spent as far as time and effort and ideas, and so I, I believe that it's, it's received well to go into dormancy. So the next steps are that on January the 10th, we will have a, which is a Friday, we will have a board and BIA member meeting where we will discuss the sort of finalities of, of the BIA coming to its dormant state. And my understanding is that we vote on it at that point, and then it is in effect until the end of this term of council. And I think that that's it. That's all I have to say. And I believe that it's a good thing. I think also it's going to come back. I firmly believe that it's going to come back. I don't know in what nature. I don't know that it'll be a formal BIA, if it will be a downtown association of some fashion. I think that there's interest in that. It's just that everybody, for, for what we have right now, needs to take a break. And that's it.
Okay. So, are there any, oh, oh, I am speaking. I see Aaron's light is on. Oh, it's up. It says that I'm speaking, she's speaking. Anyway, Counselor Jorgensen, you have a question? I'm not seeing his.
Thank you, Worship. I'm just curious if all the members of the BIA have been notified of this at this point, or how does that work? Because I think the, you know, the individual property owners or whatnot should be aware of, of that, because obviously money's been collected over the years, and, and to that effect as well, it may be a question for our finance staff here. What, what happens with, with the money that's been collected and is in reserve, as I understand, for the BIA? Because I, that would be, you know, if I was a member of the BIA, that's what I would want to know what's going to happen with that money that's already been collected.
Counselor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will field the call, the question to Mr. Jeffrey. I will say, though, that one thing that was very, very, very important to the remaining members of the board was that the downtown Christmas lights have been taken care of for this year and for next year. So the reserves, what's remaining in the reserves has taken care of or afforded us to have the guarantee that the lights are obviously there right now, and for next year in the downtown core. But further to that, I'll throw it to Mr. Jeffrey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to Counselor Jorgensen. That's absolutely correct. In the state of dormancy, which is a period of three years, as I understand it, the finance staff will, will just, the reserve will assist the finance staff meet the financial obligations that would be made by the current BIA, namely the Mr. Holiday Lights contract. Just, just in the future, if, if the BIA doesn't continue, or continues in a different format, but maybe not as a BIA, under the municipal act, the reserve is, becomes a town reserve at the discretion of council. But I can't imagine for a second that council would, you know, just assume that and throw it into the bigger pot. I'm, I'm sure it would maintain its, its nature and, and be put to use somewhere in the downtown, since that's where the funded, the funding came from that source. But, but again, that's just conjecture. I think at that point, when, if, if there was no more dormancy and it was disbanded, it would become a reserve of, of council at council's discretion.
I'm going to go over to Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just to add, I believe as part of the procedure, I don't believe, I know, a, a report does need to come back to council that will detail a lot of the specifics that that may be coming to mind at this point. The next step, however, as, as Counselor Strength indicated, is for the, the board to hold a membership meeting in, in January to get the, the formal go-ahead from the membership, and then as part of the procedure, things do need to circle back here through the town, and we'll, we'll certainly get into the, the nature of the, the standing of the reserves and, and that sort of thing in that report as well. So I just wanted to offer that this isn't the final stage in the process. It's, it's an update from Counselor Strength on where things stand right now with respect to the BIA.
Counselor Strength, did you want to say something, or that's sufficient, that covers it? Okay. I'm going to actually, in case there's a question in Counselor Varney's, I'm going to go to Counselor Varney and then back over to you, just so you can kill two birds with one stone, in case there's a question in there.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. I feel this is really quite a sad thing, but I think down the road, hopefully it will be a positive thing as well. I mean, I was on the original start of the BIA, so that tells you how old I am, I think, maybe a little bit, but anyway. And that was an amazing BIA, because we had a lot of businesses in the town, and there were a lot, there was lots of support for the BIA, and that's the unfortunate thing right now, is we have so few retailers on that BIA area. So hopefully, in the next three years, that we get more businesses coming to town that want to do some sort of formal type of BIA business. I'm hoping that will be our future. And I guess my question is, to Counselor Strength, is I believe that we own the lights, because I was the one who organized Mr. Holiday Lights, and I think we bought them. Maybe you don't know this, Mr. Treasurer, Ross. We don't own them?
No, I think the whole idea is that you get, you get fresh ones every year, so they, yeah, so that you don't worry about them burning out or replacing bulbs, or they get checked every year. Counselor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize, I wasn't succinct with my comments. We, we, the town of Gravenhurst, will be responsible for notifying the membership of the January 10th meeting, so that we'll have specifics, we'll have a time and a location and that sort of thing. So we collectively will know, Mr. Resilious, collectively will notify the membership to gather, to get, to get as many people. That's one of the problems, though, is getting participation in the hopes to get people together to come and be aware of the decisions that are being made for the downtown.
Okay. Great. Well, thanks for that update. Counselor Varney, off, over to you for Muskoka Watershed Council update. Remind you, you do have five minutes.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. And normally, this would be Counselor Johnston's time to bring a report, but he's asked me to do this. So this was an eye-opener to the work that is ahead of us in this presentation. It will not happen overnight, but we have to start somewhere, and this was a first from Muskoka, and it was definitely a positive start. There were some wonderful guest speakers, Jeff Lehman, our district chair, Trevor Griffin from Ministry of Natural Resources, Kevin Trimble from Watershed Council, Chief Ted Williams from RAMA, Glenn Cunningham, manager of Watershed Programs, and also this wonderful young student from Huntsville High School, Alice Drawham, who spoke quite emotionally and with great knowledge about how important this is for her and her peers in the future. I spoke to her after the meeting to congratulate her for her presentation. She is heading to university eventually to work and help in this field, and we are so very lucky to have young people who realize at this young age how important this project is. Mayor Nancy Alcock from Huntsville, along with Mayor Terry Glover from Lake of Bays, did a great job of putting this event together with the guest speakers and slide presentations. We ended up in groups brainstorming on ideas on how we can help. Number one, by working together as municipalities, not individually. Number two, pool our knowledge and resources. And three, make some solid decisions and govern those decisions that we make. We do have volunteer groups already, like the Eco-Salt Group, who are treating Gull Lake to get an idea of the salt content, which unfortunately eventually killed Jevons Lake, and other groups are checking shorelines. We are looking for nature-based solutions. In closing, Mayor Nancy Alcock threw it back to the rest of the municipalities that we have to continue the work with ideas flowing. So Mayor Alcock stated that she started it in the north and told our mayor Lorenz that she should run with this and do the next one in the south. The template is there to follow, and I know Counselor Karens and Johnston, who are also at the workshop, will be reminding her, but will also help and support her in this project. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for that update. Are there any questions for Counselor Varney? Okay, seeing none. Well, thank you. That brings me to me. So, I have a few things. Obviously, it's been, it's been a, a long ride for our, our team over the last couple weeks, and I couldn't be prouder of them. So I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you out there and in here who have, you know, done your part. I also want to thank the public for their tenacity and their patience, and for the most part, their graciousness amongst each other. I do appreciate that, and I think that we are going to, and we have, I, I hope everybody was able to read the news release that we posted yesterday about the emergency being lifted at 11 o'clock yesterday. It was full of information. I'm not going to reiterate any of it here. I think it detailed very well. However, saying that, we are going to go back and have a look at things come January and have a detailed debrief with, I believe we're going to look at all aspects of, of how we got to where we were. So I think that's really important, to be able to go back and, and look at it after having some downtime. Again, can't thank the team enough, and all the people who came to help. I mean, there's many listed, and I've listed them a number of times, but, so I won't go into that, but a huge, huge thank you on behalf of all of council, to everyone. On a, also not sad note, this is Mr. Jeffrey's last meeting with us today. You know, I can't say enough about your enthusiasm for your job. I mean, I can't, accounting seems fun to you, and so I think that we all share in your enthusiasm when you do your presentations, and we'll, we'll miss it. But I'm going to throw it over to C.L. Lucas to give remarks, but on behalf of council, we want to thank you for your dedication. And, and also, I mean, you don't have to listen to Mr. Jeffrey, he's pretty keen about lean, too, and he's brought a great program to the town, and his contributions to the community as a member of Rotary and the Curling Club are really remarkable, and he's a good steward for the town of Gravenhurst. So with that, Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You successfully stolen pretty much all of my thunder, so I, I too wanted to thank Ross, Mr. Jeffrey, for, for his contributions here at the town. He's been an incredible leader for this organization and for the community, as you alluded to a lot of what he does in the community with, with Rotary. a lot of what he does in the community with, with Rotary. He's a fierce curler and touches the community in so many different ways. So really wanted to thank Mr. Jeffrey in his last committee of the whole and council meeting with us here today. Didn't want to rain on Mr. Campbell's parade earlier on in the, the previous report, but really appreciate Mr. Jeffrey's efforts and the enthusiasm that he brings to all things finance, again, things in the community, all things risk management for this organization and, and corporate culture. So again, I just wanted to thank him again and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you for that, Mr. Lucas. Moving on, we know the holiday season is coming up. I am going to encourage people to shop local. It's always good to support your local friends and neighbors who invest in this community. So shop local when you can. And I want to thank the economic development team who are pushing that out and have created, it seems a long time ago since we did the tree lighting, but it was fantastic. So I want to thank them for their efforts, you know, to promote the holiday season. And I guess Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And, you know, it's been, I hope everybody has a restful holidays. And yeah, thanks, thanks for a good year. We got a lot done. I think we should look at maybe a year in review early and, and, you know, checkmark some of those wins. So a lot of wins. Let's concentrate on the wins and 2025 is going to be a good year. So, thank you. And with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Committee of the whole. Is that what I'm doing? Okay, thank you. That carries, thank you. It is moved by councillor Cairn, second by councillor Hunter. Be resolved that the council agenda as presented on December 17th, 2024, be approved as circulated. Please vote. That carries, thank you. It is moved by councillor Johnston. Pardon me? Oh, thank you. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest, council? Okay, seeing none. It is moved by councillor Johnston, second by councillor Jorgensen. Be it resolved that the council minutes from November 19th, 2024, be adopted as circulated? All in favor? Please vote. Sorry about that, my pen quit. That carries, thank you. It is moved by councillor Morphy, second by councillor Robinson. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole minutes from November 19th, 2024, be adopted as circulated? All in favor? Okay. That carries, thank you. Okay. Now, Mr. Deputy. So I have these bylaws. I just want one to be removed separately. So I read them all and then ask for that, or? Okay. Okay. Great, thank you. It's moved by councillor Strength, second by councillor Varney. Be it resolved that the following bylaws be read, passed, and engrossed into the bylaw book? Bylaw number 2024-123, red divide ward, or re-divide, red divide. Re-divide ward boundaries for the town of Gravenhurst. Bylaw number 2024-124, 2025 interim tax levy. Bylaw number 2024-125, 2025 temporary borrowing. Bylaw number 2024-126, appoint treasurer, Wayne Campbell. Bylaw number 2024-127, appoint committee of adjustment. Does anybody want to poll any of those to be read separately? Councillor Strength?
Let's poll number one, the ward boundaries. And let's have a recorded vote.
Okay, great. Councillor Jorgensen?
I'd just like to poll the committee of adjustment one for discussion.
Okay. Okay, so, Mr. Deputy, what do you want us to do? Vote on the remaining three? Okay, so that's what we'll do? We'll vote on the remaining three? Okay, and that carries. And then we'll go over to the, our re-divide ward boundaries for the town of Gravenhurst. Need a second for that? Councillor Robinson? Okay. So, did you want to speak to it further, councillor Strength? Or you got your point across first time around? Okay. Second, you're fine? Okay. Anybody else want to talk to it? I think kicked it around a bit. Okay, so we'll just do a recorded vote just for old time's sake. Great.
Councillor Hunter?
Yes.
Councillor Morphy?
Yes.
Councillor Varney?
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Councillor Cairns?
Yes.
Mayor Lorenz?
No.
Councillor Strength?
No.
Councillor Jorgensen?
No.
Okay, and that carries?
Oh, there's two votes, but it's okay.
Okay. So did, did the screens capture the vote correctly? Because I think.
No. Miss councillor Johnston.
Okay. Okay, it's fine, we have it recorded. Okay, so that's fine, just because it was a recorded vote. Okay, great. So now we're going to go over to councillor Jorgensen. So we know you need a second. Okay, councillor Strength? So councillor Jorgensen?
Thank you, Worship. Although this is a fairly routine bylaw to reappoint the committee, I, I just want to give a shout-out. I think, I think probably councillor Strength would share my, my feelings that we have a very good, dedicated group of citizen members of this committee. I think we see much more conversation than, than we have in the past. Lot of thoughtful and prepared information that are, in particular, I mean, it's given that councillor Strength and I, of course, are always on top of it. But, but seriously, our, you know, the community members that we, that we have, Mr. Ungerman, Mr. Sims, and Mr. Watson put a lot of effort into this committee. And I just want to give them a shout-out for a job well done, as far as I'm concerned.
Councillor Strength, you had something to add?
I concur.
Well, for handing out thanks, I wanted to thank, I want to thank them, too. I sometimes pop in to watch the discussion when, you know, some of these, some of these meetings are quite detailed and, and there's no lack of engagement from the committee. So I really appreciate their service and think it's, and staff, too. I mean, I think the staff, they obviously do a great job as well. But it just is, it seems, it feels good. It feels like everything's working there. So thanks for giving us the opportunity to thank them. Okay, so let's vote on that. Okay, and that carries, thank you. Okay. Great. So it's moved by councillor Cairn, second by councillor Hunter. Be it resolved that bylaw number 2024-128 to confirm the council meeting held on December 17th, 2024, be passed. And please vote. That carries. And a motion to adjourn. Councillor Johnston and councillor Hunter. Can't get out of here fast enough. No. Anyway, no, but in all seriousness, thanks, thanks for a good year. Thanks. Oh, we need votes.